It started. The other guys are going to be right back. They just went to the parking lot. Scott, we're going to go ahead and kick it off. The other guys will be here in just a sec. There's Bart now, so I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. Okay, Jonathan? We're starting a little tardy. This is the study session for the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente. It is Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. And as I mentioned, we had a previous meeting of our Design Review Subcommittee, which ran over, so it's cut into our study session time. We're starting at 5:21 instead. We have all commissioners present tonight, except for Commissioner McGaughan. And we have a wireless telecommunications alternate site analysis process review before our study session tonight. And so we're going to conduct that. And then following that, we will start the regular Planning Commission. So with that, I want to introduce our presenter. We have, unless you want to do it, Jonathan?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so we have Robert May. He is a managing partner with a telecom law firm in San Diego. And he is going to give us an overview of our wireless applications. Sir, welcome to City of San Clemente in our study session before the Planning Commission. We appreciate your time and your preparation to prepare your presentation.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Robert May, and it's a pleasure to be here in front of you guys. I have been familiar with the city for a while because I'm outside counsel to the city for wireless matters. But this is my first time addressing the Planning Commission, so it's a pleasure to be here. I hope you guys don't mind a long PowerPoint. I tried to cut it down as long as I could. But you know, they say PowerPoint, or power corrupts, but PowerPoint corrupts absolutely. So I'm trying to give us some guideposts in this presentation. Each slide will have a topic. We'll have some conversation. If you have questions for me, please just ask them. We don't need to wait until the end. I think it works better when we have a little bit of an exchange, and I can answer your questions as they come along. And while we're getting started, I'm trying to move through the slides. Do you want me just to ask for the next slide? Or, okay. So this is a slide about B. It's in your packet. You don't necessarily need to go through it today because we can switch to the next one. Because I am a lawyer, I have to say this kind of stuff. But I'm here telling you about the law, even though I'm not giving you legal advice. The most important thing to realize is that we're not talking about any particular case. We're going to talk about general concepts, major themes and elements of the law that are applicable to the decision-making processes that you're going to have to take up when the applications come in. And some pointers and some best practices to make sure that your decisions are as well-informed as they could possibly be and defensible as they could possibly be. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give you a crash course in federal law. This is probably going to be the most boring part of the presentation, but I'll try to make it fun. The next part, the second part, is going to be the most interesting part, where we get to take those concepts that we talk about and apply them to what you're actually doing here. Next slide, please. Next slide again. So we have three basic statutes in the Telecommunications Act. The first one is Section 332, the next one is 253, and the last one is 1455A. They each deal with different categories of types of facilities and services. The first major one is 332. That deals with cell sites, personal wireless service facilities. And this lays down the bedrock rules. We'll start there. Then we'll talk about 253. This is more of an umbrella type of statute. It deals with telecommunications services, which has a squishier definition, but as a practical matter, mostly deals with things that are in the right-of-way. It could come up in non-right-of-way contexts, so we'll touch on it as well. And then 1455 is a statute that deals with modifications to existing facilities. So it is relevant to not just those types of applications, but also the types of applications for new facilities that could be modified in the future. So understanding how that statute works is going to inform how you make decisions about new facilities under either 332(c)(7) or 253. These statutes are not very well-written, and that's not just my opinion. That's the Supreme Court of the United States. The direct quote is "not a model of clarity." So I will try to separate this out as best I can into the key elements that are practical for you to work through. Next slide, please. So, starting with 332(c)(7), remember, this is for personal wireless service facilities. This is dealing with traditional cell sites, private property, also in the right-of-way, but you know, what you would think of as a wireless facility, either on a tall tower or on a rooftop. And the statute is structured in a way that says, "All local authority is preserved unless it's not." And then it gives some specific examples of when it's not. Three of them are substantive, and two of them are procedural. I've listed them out for you here, but we're going to go through them one by one, so why don't we go to the next slide and get started? The first one is, "There can be no unreasonable discrimination amongst functionally equivalent service providers." And what that really means is you don't pick winners or losers, but it doesn't mean you have to treat everybody the same. Not all the applications you get before you, even though they may be for rooftop facilities or tower facilities, are always going to be exactly the same. And there also is a point in time when there's a cumulative impact from too much infill for these facilities in one particular location. This statute says that you have to treat everybody the same until you reach that point. You have a rational basis to say that we've got a reason why we're not going to approve your application, even though we may have approved others in the past. That's okay. But you have to have that rational basis. You also have to treat the competitors the same, right? So when you're making these comparisons, it's apples to apples. AT&amp;Ts and Verizons, T-Mobiles and Verizons, right? Those carriers are the ones you're comparing. You're not comparing AT&amp;T to SoCal Edison. Next slide, please. Here's a big one. Effective prohibitions are not permitted under the federal law. What the Telecom Act is supposed to be a grand bargain by preserving as much of the local interest as possible while making sure that local interests don't prevent the rollout of a nationwide wireless communications network. A robust, redundant, usable, competitive, cost-efficient network. And so this is really the main tool that's driving a lot of that balance. So what an effective prohibition is, is a particular denial of a single site that prevents an applicant from closing a significant gap in their own service coverage through the least intrusive means available to that applicant. It also could mean that the denial is materially inhibiting that applicant from competing in a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment. There are two tests. And right now, there isn't a clear rule from the courts about which test controls. The courts that have taken up these cases since both tests have come into existence have tended to just say, "We're going to apply both and see how things square out." But we'll talk about each one of them, and you should understand what the standards mean and the kinds of information you'll want to take in when you go through that. So, starting with significant gap in least intrusive means test. This is the traditional test that was developed by courts interpreting this particular statute. The Ninth Circuit's had this test in the book since 2005, and their standard is a two-pronged approach. The applicant has to demonstrate that they have a significant gap in their own service coverage and that they propose the least intrusive means. It's an "and" test, right? So what that really means is, even if they show a significant gap, if they haven't proposed the least intrusive means, then they don't win, right? You can have a significant gap, but you must use the least intrusive means in order to override your local authority. It's a great question. And the reason why I think that's a great question is that you're already skipping over significant gap, which is what I think you should do. There's a, just briefly before I get to that specific answer, on significant gap, there's no bright line test. The courts say that it's more than a dead spot, and it may be determined by looking at unlimited number of unwated factors. And those include whether it's close to residential, close to an arterial highway, or a major road, affects public safety, any number of things. And no one factor is going to be most important. So what you end up looking at is a very highly technical, fact-specific question that doesn't have a clear test for figuring out if you get the right answer. So because we don't need a significant gap, we should focus on the least intrusive means. And the least intrusive means has a way of figuring it out. So it's, in the judicial test, it's a burden-shifting framework. The applicant comes in, and they have to come in with an alternative sites analysis that shows a good faith effort to evaluate all the options that they could find and propose what they think is the best for the city, considering the values expressed in your local code. You don't have to accept that. If you don't like any of those options, and none of them could be approved, like the findings could not be made, then the burden is now shifted to you to propose sites that would be better, whether they would be approvable under your code or just less intrusive on the values that would be upheld if you denied the applicant's proposal. And I want to stop there, just focus on that. That's what least intrusive really means. It's the least intrusive site that is, I'm sorry, it's a site that is least intrusive on the local values you're trying to uphold by denying an application. Because in this context, we're looking at something that is preemption. You might want to deny this site. Maybe you can't make the findings. But the federal government is telling you that if the denial causes an effective prohibition, then you will be preempted. They'll issue the injunction and order the site to be built anyway. But it's not just any site that they propose. It's the least intrusive. So in the burden-shifting framework, it's up to the city, when they get that initial alternative sites analysis, to say, "Okay, we want you to either investigate those sites a little further or look into sites that you didn't look at," right? And you look all around the city. You look at your code. Maybe there are more commercial areas that they didn't examine very closely. Maybe they could reduce the height. But it's about trying to find a facility, a location, a design that fits more closely or ideally complies with your local code. And then, once you do that, the burden shifts back to the carrier. The applicant has to show you that all of the alternatives that the city proposed are either technically infeasible, meaning it won't solve their problem, it can't be built, or it's potentially unavailable, they can't get a lease. Once they do that, the burden shifts back to the city, and the process goes back and forth until everybody runs out of ideas, right? So it's kind of like playing a game of hot potato. But at the end of this process, you either end up with the applicant running out of excuses, the city running out of ideas, or a potential slate of alternatives that could work. And if you're in that last category, the city gets to choose. Their choice always controls, because it's the least intrusive means reflecting your local values. So you're in the best position to determine what that means. They don't need to, but they like to, because they don't like to share. There are certain entities that are designed for sharing. Infrastructure companies are like REITs, right? They're like a strip mall, but instead of going across the street, they're going up a pole, and they make money by leasing space out to various carriers. There are also technologies available that allow multiple carriers to use the same antennas. But they're sharing resources, right? There's only so much bandwidth in an antenna, only so much output power that can be achieved. And so when they're sharing, they're not getting as much as they want. They don't like to. Yes. What matters is how you express your values in the code. So if your code says, "We want you to evaluate co-location," which is the concept you're describing about sharing space first, that's one way of expressing that value. And if there were alternative sites where they could co-locate with existing facilities, that would be a higher, more preferred location that, if was technically feasible and potentially available, you could require them to use instead of their own site. It goes the same way for anything else, right? So if you order your preferences or if your code is written in such a way that says, "We like sites in commercial areas. We like sites that stay within its own height limit. We like sites that are designed to blend in with the architecture of our seaside community." Those are the types of bases used on which you can say, "We like these alternatives that we are finding better, and we want you to investigate them." I'm not prepared to talk about the code as it stands tonight, but if you'd like to talk about some hypotheticals or examples that you want me to give you an opinion about, I could do my best.
We do have a wireless master plan, and that does identify preferred sites generally. And that's why we have a streamlined process for a, for instance, city antenna permit. A city antenna permit is a zoning administrator approval as opposed to a conditional use permit and only applies to those locations identified in that wireless master plan. The wireless master plan also identifies preferred, like, designs. And then, those are context-sensitive, so if you're in open space, it's likely going to be a faux tree that is comparable to other trees in the area. If you're in a more urbanized setting, then it's probably going to be attached to an existing building. And then finally, on the co-location, it's generally referenced as a position of support. The one thing that always comes into play there is that in order to facilitate co-location, that typically means that the original base tower has to be taller. So in some cases, if someone wants to co-locate, then that means that the tower that's existing needs to go up by 15, 20 feet in order to facilitate a co-location. So I would say that there's an interest in that, but it's not always a preference for it because of the context.
And then three general rules of thumb when you're talking about trying to express your values are be plain, right? There's no magic words here. Say what you mean, what you think is important. Be voluminous, right? More is more. If you've got more to say, don't leave it out, especially if you've got design guidelines where you can supplement basic standards and findings in your code. And then, third, to the extent you can, rank your preferences. Because that will give you the ability to say, "We like one alternative more than the other." It'd be more defensible when you say, "We're denying your application because it's technically feasible and potentially available, but you won't use it." Before we move on, just a note on the material inhibition standard. This is a standard that the FCC has created and attempted to supplant the significant gap least intrusive means test. As I mentioned, the courts really aren't decided about what they're going to do with it. And in practice, what they do is apply both tests. But the standard is that any action, or standard, or rule, or statute, or ordinance that materially inhibits any competitor or potential competitor's ability to compete in a fair and balanced legal and regulatory environment is an effective prohibition. And that sounds like a word salad. It is, right? The key takeaway is here is that when this standard gets applied, not every inhibition is material. Not everything that's more expensive is material. And not everything that is more difficult is material. It's a, it is a test of degrees. It's a, it is a test of degrees, and when the courts are evaluating it, they tend to just stack things up and say, if it's just a little harder, but it will result in a net overall benefit to the community, we'll side with the community. But if it's just harder for harder sake, or more expensive for expensive sake, or if it looks like the city is trying to drive them out of this process altogether, because they're stacking up all those requirements, then they tend to side with the applicant. Next slide, please.
Let me ask Jonathan real quick. Now, kind of what Scott was asking, are we trying to create, I mean, what, I love the education that we're getting and understanding, but is it, I mean, are we trying to help create standards in what the city's looking for in those bullet points, in that structure? Or are we, you just, or is this just an education for the planning commission?
At this time, it's just education for the planning commission. Our wireless master plan is fairly old, so we may be updating that at some point in the future, but the purpose currently is just to have a more clear understanding of, you know, what are our guardrails when we're evaluating projects that come forward? So at this time, that's the focus.
So the last substantive limitation through this statute is related to radio frequency regulation. The text of the statute is right here in front of you. The key part of this restriction is that if the application that comes before you complies with the FCC standard for exposure, then it complies. The city can't set its own standard, it can't change the standard. All it can do is test for compliance, so to make sure that the facility that's going to be built will meet the FCC standard before it issues its approval. Issue conditions of approval that will ensure maintained compliance, things like barriers if it's on a rooftop, anti-climbing devices if it's on a tower, things that keep people away from where these facilities are. And then enforce these requirements if the facility ever enters out of compliance, right? Falls away from the standard, is too, and becomes too hot. A good rule of thumb here is that if the FCC could do it, so can you, right? So they have their own rules, and you can play within the rules that they've set out for you.
Can we require annual RF recording and report to see that it's in compliance of the entire site?
So there was, the short answer is no to annual testing.
Okay.
But yes to annual affirmations of continued compliance by a person knowledgeable with the operation of the facility. This was tried by the City of Calabasas in 2013, they were struck down with that requirement. They shifted away from annual testing to an annual affirmation by their engineer, and that's, that has continued to work just fine.
Okay, and when an applicant comes in for co-location, we can require that applicant to do an RF survey of the entire site, not just their application, right?
That's correct. So compliance with the FCC's rules means that you do not create areas of exposure that exceed the maximum permissible levels set by the FCC, including all the ambient emissions that are already there. So when you're putting a new facility in, if it's co-located, you have to look at your neighbors and add your facilities there, even if it's not on the same building, let's say there's one across the street with antennas pointed in the same direction, you have to take into account those ambient emissions as well. All right, the last thing I'll mention about RF regulation is that there is no gag order, right? You cannot base your decisions upon disagreements with the FCC standard, but the public can still voice their concerns to you, even though you can't do anything about it, and you can voice your concerns about these standards and their adequacy, even though you can't base your decisions on them. If you find yourself in these situations where the record is going to be replete with these kinds of statements, or if you feel compelled to make your opinion known, you also need to make it very clear that the grounds for your decision are based on permissible aesthetic issues, compliance with the findings. One of the best ways to make sure that you do that is to make sure that you make it known on the record that the site has demonstrated compliance with the FCC's rules. So like, through the application process, a third-party independent engineer has done an evaluation and shown plan compliance. Next slide, please.
Regarding this topic, we've had some before, and the public always talks about, oh, 5G, 5G. So are there 5G standards covered in the RF standards, I assume, or it's just all the same RF to a radio engineer?
It's all RF, right? The difference between 4G and 5G is 1G, right? It's just, it's marketing, really. What the difference in the generational standards from industry perspective are, is how fast it moves data through the pipe, but it's still using the same frequencies, but different kinds of technologies, processing power, and computers, and network architecture to move that data along faster.
Is it kicking out more RF?
No, but one thing that is an artifact of the way in which the industry has rolled out 5G, in large part, is that they're using very high-frequency microwave signals, it's a different radio frequencies that have been used in the past for cell sites, but they're still just radio frequencies. The difference between very high frequencies and then the traditional low-band signals is that very high frequencies vibrate so fast that they don't go through the walls very well, and they don't propagate as far, but they carry a lot of data. So that means that the facilities need to be closer to where the users are, and that does raise some concerns, because proximity to the antennas is one of the things that is most likely to cause non-compliance with the FCC rules. But so long as the FCC rules, sorry, so long as the facility maintains compliance with that maximum permissible exposure, which is the same level that's always been set since the mid-'90s, then the facility complies. It doesn't matter which G they're using. All right, so now we're moving into the substantive, I'm sorry, the procedural requirements. The first one is probably the most important for you guys, because it affects how you make your decisions, and the reasons why you issue approvals or denials. So the rule is that all denials of a wireless facility application have to be in writing, based on substantial evidence in the record. So in writing is not that hard. The hidden requirement there is that it's not just stamp deny on an application, you also have to give written reasons. It doesn't have to be in the same document, it could just be contemporaneously available in two different ones, but they have to be in writing and then available to the applicant within the reasonable time set by the FCC rules. The, go ahead.
Is that from the final approving body, or is that from?
It's, it's all the way down the chain.
Bodies.
It's all the way down the chain. So any denial, whether it be by director of planning, zoning administrator, planning commission, or city council, if it's a denial, has got to meet this standard.
Okay.
Yeah. So the substantial evidence standard is very useful for us, because it's also very deferential to cities. It takes your local findings as they are, and asks whether the amount of evidence in the record is that which a reasonable mind would accept as supporting the conclusion you reached. Even if reasonable minds could disagree, if it could support the conclusion, the tie goes to the local government. So it's not a very high standard, but the evidence itself does have to be specific. Generalized assertions about all cell towers are dangerous, or all cell towers are ugly, that doesn't meet the substantial evidence standard. You have to tie it back to this particular tower. What is ugly or dangerous, or, you know, injurious to the community about this tower? That's how you get to substantial evidence. Next slide, please. And you have to make these decisions within a period of time that's defined by the FCC, and the period of time depends upon the kind of application it is. So the timeline is never going to be less than 60 days, it's never going to be more than 150 days. It may be extended by mutual agreement between the applicant and the city, or by the incompleteness of applications filed initially by the, by the carrier. There are a lot of very complex rules that go into determining how you calculate the shot clock. The most important ones that you have to bear in mind are that incompleteness can only be based on publicly stated rules. You only get really one chance to define all the missing pieces of an application, and the shot clock itself almost never resets. So this is very different from a lot of the other types of development applications you see under the Permit Streamlining Act. The remedies under the federal rules for the shot clock are not very threatening, right? Usually, it's a remand back to the city with a defined timeline to make a decision. But the state has, and we'll talk about this a little bit more detail down the line, they've stepped in and adopted their own statute that says, failure to meet these timelines set by the federal government results in an automatic approval for the application. So it is very important that you keep track of what the timelines are, where you are on that timeline, and that you either approve or deny an application before that time runs out.
Can we define what a complete application is before the clock can start? In other words, they can't just submit an incomplete, and it starts, and then they get back to us, dribble, 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 and can we have a threshold that says, these are the components, we'll start it once they're all met, including the fee? Can we do that?
The answer is, it feels like a two-part question, and I think the answers are yes and no. So the, yes, you can define the elements of a complete application, including the fee.
Okay.
No, you cannot prevent the applicant from filing an incomplete application. What you can do is take that application in, review it, deem it incomplete within the time allowed for complete disreview. And because, I mentioned, we've got this one byte rule, you get one chance, that first time you get a chance to take a look at the application, you should make sure you check every box, everything that could be missing, identify. More is more in this particular context.
Got it, got it, and that could be a denial.
If the applicant refuses to give you information you need to make findings, it sounds like a basis for denial to me, because you can't make the findings, right? Next slide, please. Here's a summarized shot clock. We don't need to get through all this, this is nitty-gritty stuff, it's probably more interesting for Jonathan than it is for you guys, but it does give you a sense of the fact that this has to move along at a fairly fast clip. Next slide, please. All right, we made it through the first statute, congratulations. Now we're on to 253, and as I mentioned, this deals with telecommunications services. So it's not just wireless, it could be wireline. Telecommunication services are really common carrier services, it's just moving data from one point to another selected by the customer. And this statute is functioning in a little bit of the reverse of the one we just talked about. So the one we talked about, 332, everything is preserved unless it's preempted. In this one, everything's preempted unless it's preserved, right? So the, the, the exceptions are broad enough to make sure that you guys can still have some discretion, but they include competitively neutral and nondiscriminatory right-of-way management regulations. As I mentioned, this statute largely deals with facilities in the right-of-way, wireline, communications, and things like that, or requirements for fair and reasonable compensation. So this is, it kind of sits on top of 332(c)(7). It could apply to wireless facilities, especially as small cells are making more of an impact, but it's largely dealing with wireline facilities. Next slide, please. And the last statute that you really need to make sure that you're aware of is 1455. This is also known as Section 6409, also sometimes called eligible facilities requests, or EFRs. The statute is very short, and all it says is that you have to approve, and you cannot deny, certain co-locations and modifications to existing facilities that don't substantially change the physical dimensions of the underlying facility that's being modified or co-located upon. And the FCC has definitions for most of these terms, right? The substantial change has a set of criteria that involves height with number of equipment cabinets, square footage increases, or deployments outside the site area, they're all objective. But it also has requirements that the facilities, or the modifications and co-locations do not defeat existing concealment elements associated with the underlying facility. So to give you an example, if you had a fake tree, like a pine tree, and they wanted to do a 10-foot extension on top to add a new carrier, but did not want to extend up the same kind of concealment, that would definitely defeat the concealment. If they didn't want to paint the equipment the same color as other equipment that's on the facade of a building that they're adding to, that would be the same kind of thing as well. The one thing that the FCC didn't do that would've been much more helpful is to define what concealment element is. In the blind, you guys get to define that. So when you're thinking about the approval of new facilities, if the facility is architecturally integrated into a building, or designed to look like a fake tree, or otherwise concealed in some way, even if it's just painting things, or hiding the equipment, or orienting it away from prominent views, you should mention that. Identify those concealment elements as important, because it'll help prevent future modifications that you might not have discretion to deny from going forward, in a way that would defeat the efforts that you're going through with the new site approval. This particular statute also has a shorter shot clock, so it's 60 days, and unlike 332, it has a federal remedy of a deemed approval. So if you fail to act, then the statute, the statute requires that the facility be automatically approved, and the courts have interpreted that as meaning the applicants don't need to get permits. They can just go out and build the modification that they applied for, but never got a decision on within the shot clock. I think that's a dangerous proposition, so it's better to deny these applications if they don't seem to stack up, or to make sure that you approve them with conditions, if you have to. So again, the acting on time is really important. All right, next slide, please. I'll, I'll just glance over this one. The moratorium order is probably the most important thing for you guys. I should hit you with a ton of facts, a ton of law, things that you probably have a lot of ideas and questions about, and in a normal course of business, you might drop a moratorium in order to study the issue, understand it, and decide what you want to do going forward. But in this context, according to the FCC, we can't do that. So it is not just about preventing applications from coming in, it's about effective prohibitions. So if you were to attempt to do this, or to try to stave off applications in some way, then you would be deemed to be effectively prohibiting their ability to provide their service, and as a practical consequence, that usually leads to injunctions ordering the issuance of permits, right? It's a trap that's set, that makes it so that you can't just stop deployments altogether. So it's important to think about these issues in real time. There is no emergency shut-off switch, like there are in other contexts. Next slide, please. All right, so that was the feds. Here's California law. I know we're dealing mostly with private property sites outside the right-of-way, but I'll just mention that in addition to the federal rights that the FCC and Congress have granted these wireless companies in private property in the right-of-way, we have one of the oldest statutes in California granting statewide franchises to telecommunications companies. Section 7901's been on the books since 1851, and it is not displacing all of your authority. It just means that you can't say absolutely no, and the carriers can't build whatever they want, whenever they want, however they want. You have to compromise and allow them to use the public rights away. It also means that you can't charge them for their access to your streets. But you can impose reasonable aesthetic design requirements in the nature of zoning. So if you're looking at your design criteria from the perspective of the right-of-way, the same kind of things you're thinking about on private property could be applied in the right-of-way from an aesthetic location design point of view. Next slide, please. I think the most important one for you guys to look at on this slide is the first one. The state legislature has a list of things that you can and cannot do when it comes to the conditions of approval. So you can, you can require bonds for removal of existing facilities, but no cash deposits. There's a limit on how short the permits can be. All permits you issue have to be at least 10 years long, and you cannot require that all facilities within the city be placed on property owned by the same entity. Fairly simple, but still really important, because the types of conditions that you want to apply probably have to do with how long you want to apply probably have to do with how long you want the facility to be there. Especially if you're thinking about doing updates to your code, you'd want to make sure that the facilities that have already been approved can eventually come back for review. So a time limit makes sense, but you need to be aware of that 10-year limit.
So we can expire their permit?
You can.
But it has to be 10 years, one day?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Next slide, please. All right, so that's all the law that I'm going to hit you with tonight. We'll talk about, now I want to move into like the practical discussion of what your role here is, and what you should be focusing on when these applications come in front of you. So the first thing that you always have to do is apply your findings. Apply your code, and see if this project can be approved. If it meets all your design criteria, your location criteria, the findings of approval can be made, it should be approved. So applying the standards first makes sense, because you can avoid all the other issues that we just talked about with the different various federal and state statutes to watch out for. I think you should also be aware of the fact that you don't have to make any other findings. And so we talked about significant gap, material inhibition, least intrusive means. Those are real substantive standards that courts will apply when they're reviewing your decisions, but they are not substantive standards that you have to make decisions about when you're approving or denying an application. You only have to look at your own findings. If you don't have those types of significant gap, least intrusive mean requirements in your code, you don't have to make findings about them. So first and foremost, always focus on what's in your code. Next slide, please. Next, make sure you build a very robust record. So if you've looked at everything and you think this project probably doesn't meet the findings for approval, the, your next decision is going to be, well, how do we make sure that the findings that we make are defensible? First step is make sure that you've identified every possible alternative site that you want the applicant to review. Get that into the record. Say it at the hearing, put it in a writing, a notice to the applicant. Well, however, you need to communicate that. So long as it's communicated to the applicant before the project is finally approved or denied, it's not too late. And building that record gives the, a better shot at saying that we weren't holding the bag on the burden-shifting framework at the time that if somebody ran out of good ideas. So you always want to make sure that you get as much of that in there as you possibly can. If for no other reason to make sure that you've exhausted all the other potential alternatives, so that you know that if you have to accept something that would be pre, ordered to be approved by a court, that, that you didn't miss an opportunity to find an alternative location. Next, focus on your substantial evidence. Right? So again, be as specific as you possibly can. Tie the facts that are important to you to this particular facility, and then make sure that they also relate back to the standards in your code and the findings for approval. And there is no special training, or information, or knowledge that you really need to have to make those kinds of decisions. Even when there's conflicting evidence, you have judgment, you've got common sense. The standard is whether a reasonable mind would accept the, the conclusions that you're reaching. Right? So you all have reasonable minds. That's why you're up here on the dais. If you've got conflicting evidence, or the facts are trending in a particular way, you can, you don't need to know anything about wireless facilities, or real estate, or anything in particular that is like highly specialized knowledge, to just make the findings like you would for any other type of application. And then if you do find that you are in highly technical areas, it's a good idea to consider hiring outside independent counsel. Engineers, you know, technicians, not just lawyers, right? But people who really understand these types of technical issues. That's available to you, and in most cases, you can recover their costs through the application fees. And then finally, when it comes to radio frequency exposure issues, I've mentioned this before, there is no gag order, even though you can't use this as a basis to deny applications when the applicant shows that the project's going to comply with the FCC's rules. If the, the fact that people are talking about these issues is not poisonous to the projects as a whole. It doesn't mean that you can't deny it. It doesn't mean that you're going to be, your hands are tied. All you need to do is make sure that you make it clear that even, however you feel about the issues, you're making your decision based on other criteria. Whether that be aesthetics, property values, compliance with code, whatever. Next slide, please. So when it comes to these significant gap and material inhibition issues, they both have, they both start right off the top saying, this is not necessary. Unless your code requires you to make findings about this, you don't have to wade into these issues. It is a good idea to still talk about least intrusive means, because it helps you build the record. And it's something that you control, because it's got that burden-shifting framework. You can understand where you are, look at the alternatives in front of you, make decisions that help move this process along. These ones, with the test as squishy as they are, and the facts as highly technical as they can be, it may be a wild goose chase and a waste of time. But if you do have findings in your code that require you to investigate those issues, it's a good idea to start gathering that information in the application form. And it would be a very good idea to at least have some kind of independent technical expert ready to be called in when you have questions about it. And then one last note about it is, there's no deference on these two particular issues. Right? So when it comes to substantial evidence, you get deference. When it comes to the least intrusive means, it's your opinion that matters about what's less intrusive as an alternative. But on these particular areas, it doesn't really matter what your findings are. Right? The court is always going to review it de novo, which means that new evidence could come in later, the stuff you haven't even seen, and the court is not going to be influenced one way or the other necessarily by the types of decisions that you make at this particular stage. Next slide, please. For approvals, still important to act on time. Right? Even if you intend to improve something, if you don't approve it within the shot clock, it will be approved for you, and that means it's taken out of your hands. You don't want that. We want to make sure that it has to get permits, and particularly is that you could also get the opportunity to impose conditions of approval on projects when they're necessary and appropriate. As I mentioned, it's really important to be specific about what aspects of the project you want to see preserved through future modifications, concealment elements, things like that. Next slide. And for denials, again, act on time. If you want to deny something and you miss the deadline, that boat will sail. So act, make sure you track that shot clock, and if you need more time, ask for it. If you can't get it, start getting creative about how to make sure that you deny the application. If you're in the middle of a hearing and tonight's the last night, then write the resolution up here. Or have the city attorney issue a letter that says, this is the reason for the denial, based on the findings that you're making at this hearing. That's sufficient, too. But you have to have it in writing, and it has to be issued on time. And one of the most important things that you want to think about when you're issuing your findings for a denial is to not be overly negative. Right? So one of the ways in which carriers often like to portray cities in litigation is that they're just obstructionists. They are saying no to everything. It doesn't matter what the carrier would have proposed, you would have denied it. It's a good idea to also point out what you would have approved, but the carrier refused to consider. That paints you in a much better light. It also helps you think about the types of alternatives and highlight them. So it's a good reinforcing tactic to make sure that you incorporate it into your process. Next slide, please. We've talked a lot about the remedies. The only thing I'll make, I'll mention finally is that there are no attorney's fees associated with litigation in this context. So carriers can't win them, neither can you. So litigation is always going to be expensive. Keep that in mind if you want to try to avoid it. But the shot clock itself may be short, but the statute limitations is even shorter. So lastly, there's 30 days from your final action or failure to act to file a lawsuit. And in almost every case, it's automatic that a carrier will file the lawsuit, because with that short of a timeline, they just have to do it to preserve their rights. Right? So don't be surprised if you do get sued, you know, pretty much automatically. But you want to be aware of the fact that that doesn't mean you can't continue to talk to them, doesn't mean that they are dead-set against you on, you know, prosecuting that litigation, it may just be automatic. It also means that if you want to fight it, you have to be prepared to pay up for at least your own attorney's fees. All right? I think that's the last slide I've got. Next slide, please. Any further questions?
How would, if the planning commission denied a project, their first course of action has to be an appeal to counselize them?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they have to exhaust their administrative remedies. They also have to do that within the shot clock, which means you want to make sure that your denials happen with enough time to get to that point, or that there's a tolling agreement in place that allows the shot clock to be put on hold for that appeal to take Any other questions?
Mr. Jonathan? Jonathan, does the city explore the least invasive options? Like, you know, if, if, I mean, are you guys on, you know, overturning all stones?
As we've heard, least invasive often can be a matter of discussion. And so, so yes, we do investigate and, and take a look at that. And, and some of the ones that have been mentioned this evening, so the 6409 is handled ministerially only. So those are not typically applications that you see, but using that as an example, we had a faux tree that was submitted, and, and we have to respond, and within a certain amount of time, that, in that case, they were going higher. So we not only required that they provide additional branches for the higher element, but it would have looked like a fake, very obviously a fake tree if they just extended branches up, and then you have kind of this squared-off looking thing. So, so we also required that they, like, extend further out, the lower branches, so that it at least had some semblance to a tree. So, so yes, we do try to pay attention to those things. When we get into the site analysis, I would say staff doesn't do a super deep dive on that, because there's always things that come up through the process, for ones that do go through a public hearing process and require noticing, where we may not have in our first interactions with the applicant, have yet heard from the public or from commissioners on their thoughts and preferences in, in the site-specific context of those items.
And one point that I, I picked up, that I want to make sure that is implemented when it's ZA-approved or whatever, is that if it is, if there is concealment, that it's stated. And so in the future, that, that, that goes forward. And also, on approvals, is it standard that you approve them for 10 years and one day? Are you guys currently doing that?
No, we're not currently doing that on a, a time-limited basis.
Maybe, should we do that? And then it, it gives us a, a chance to relook and see if there's other options in 10 years and one day, just as a, a standard?
I, I think I'd like to get Tripp's response on that. I, I would clarify, though, too, a lot of the telecom items that you review are on city property, and in those cases, we do have a lease. So there, there typically is a timeframe at play that the council would establish. On the back end, we on the staff side do try to be mindful of those timeframes when we get requests for amendments or extensions, at taking a look at, what is that tower? Is it in good condition? Is it, you know, a, a tower that is no longer meeting the, the guidelines or goals of that wireless master plan? So at least for those facilities on city property, we definitely pay attention to that. But I would like to get Tripp's feedback on, you know, private facilities where we don't have a lease agreement that dictates a timeframe.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the permit limits are a good idea, mostly because it avoids an amortization fight later. You don't need to have it in your code. It should be applied evenly to everybody. So if you have a standard incentive of conditions in a form, then an amendment to that form would be enough, just to make sure that it's applied to everybody the same way. And then going back to your earlier question about turning over every stone, I've been involved in these projects for more than 10 years, and I have never seen one where every stone was overturned. And it's because there's so many stones. But it's also not just the case that it's all on staff. These alternatives can come from the public. They can come from the dais, right? They can come from any source, as long as they show up somewhere in the record, and the city says, yeah, go, go look at that one. So you, you take your good ideas where you can find them. I think staff usually does a very good job of looking at areas that would be more preferred, like commercial versus residential, right? But then if you're moving it from one residential to another, it's kind of devil, you know, versus devil you don't. They also do a really good job, in my opinion, of looking at ways to improve the design of particular sites that are already proposed. Right? So not just where it is, but how it looks. Staff's really very good at doing those things. But every alternative is, is a high bar.
Jonathan, are there any next steps for us to consider? Is this a one-off, or did you want to, is this setting it up for something else?
There's not an automatic follow-up to this. I, I do have one final question I'm going to post to Tripp, just for the benefit of the commission. But in response to your question, this is, the, the commission did continue an item a couple of months ago, and as a component of that did request a study session that discussed, you know, what are the avenues available to you? So this is related to that request. And certainly, again, we do have a, the city has a relationship with Tripp, and so if there's desire, or, or this initiates other thoughts or questions, by all means, we could look at scheduling additional information sessions.
Yeah, this was excellent, very helpful. Well done.
Thank you.
So if I may, yeah, my final question would just be, Tripp, if you could elucidate a little bit the difference between, you know, when the city's responding to requests on private property versus acting in our proprietary capacity, how that impacts, in particular, the timelines that are at play, and, and how the city can go about addressing those situations.
Sure. So the city has two capacities, regulators, what you, what you're doing on a day-to-day basis, and they're also proprietors, or the own property, lease property, sell property. And they can't operate in those capacities at the same time without getting into trouble. But the, when, you were in a regulatory capacity, all the rules we talked about apply to you. Timelines, consequences, limitations, requirements. When you're in a proprietary capacity, none of them apply to you. So are no timelines. Right? There are no limitations on what you can and cannot say no for. Right? There's no possibility that your answer of no would be overridden by a court, so long as you stay within that proprietary capacity. The only chance you're going to get, to get in trouble there is if you start mixing them together. Right? So keep your, as long as you keep the lease negotiations separate from the permitting decisions, then you're in safe territory and exempt from all the dangers and things we talked about at this meeting, from the Telecom Act and from State law.
So what you're saying is, to put it in just a different context, if there's a sensitive area, public doesn't want a site, and it's city property, don't enter into a lease. That's the, that's the choke-off point. Don't, that's where to do it, is what you're saying.
Yeah, so there's a case out of the Second Circuit called Sprint versus Willoughby. It's exactly that setup. And the city said, we're saying no, because the community doesn't want it. And they don't want it because they think RF is bad for them. Sprint sued, Sprint lost, because the city can say, no, because I had a bad lunch today. In a proprietary capacity, it doesn't matter. None of that preemption applies.
Okay. Again, thank you. That was great, very helpful.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you again. We're running late, so I'm going to go ahead and move that we adjourn this study session to the next regular study session scheduled for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, 5:00 p.m., here in the city council chambers. That's a motion?
Seconded.
Seconded. And all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Can we move right into the next meeting? Anyone need a break? You need two minutes? Okay. Hang in there, guys. We're just going to start the planning commission meeting just in two minutes. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for your patience. Really appreciate it. We're running a little late tonight. I will call to order this regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente, Wednesday, December 18th, here at City Council Chambers. How about we all join me for the pledge real quick? Ready to begin?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All commissioners are present, except for Vice Chair McCacken. He is absent. Tonight, we do not have any special presentations. So that takes us to item five, minutes. So we have to take a review of our minutes from our regular meeting November 20th. Any comments from any members on the minutes from November 20th?
I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion then, from Commissioner McCann, and a second from Commissioner Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstains? All right. It passes. Thank you. Item six is oral communications from any member of the public for an item that is not on the agenda. So I presume everybody here is here for the one item. But is there any member of the public here for just public comment? See none? Takes us to item seven, consent calendar. We don't have any items for that tonight. Item eight is public hearings. We do not have any public hearings tonight. So now, we're on item nine, new business. Our first order of new business, we have a couple items here on new business, and our first one is item 9A. And this is a request to consider forwarding a recommendation to the City Council on an installation of a pedestrian refuge island on Camino Miracosta, near Miracosta Park, which is also near the Sprouts Shopping Center. And this is a request from our Engineering Division. For that, I'm going to welcome our esteemed colleagues from the Engineering Division. And we have Ryan Kim, and we have Zach Ponson with us tonight. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. You have the floor.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Zach Ponson. I'm your Assistant City Engineer. Tonight with me, I have Ryan Kim, our Senior Civil Engineer, Traffic Engineer. Like you mentioned, we have a pedestrian refuge island being proposed on Avenida Miracosta. Staff's presentation will be pretty short. In general, my slide is mostly just the actual exhibit. I have a couple slides showing the bigger area in general. This is just south of the Camino de Estrella intersection and Camino Miracosta, where there is a crosswalk and bus stops and several other features there, a trolley stop up that intersection also. And then to the south of that, we have the Miracosta Park. Over the last couple of years, we have been getting some requests for some other types of pedestrian crossings in that area. It's generally from some of the senior apartments to the east of Miracosta. A lot of people walk on their dogs to and from the park. And then there is some use of the park on weekends for sports activities, where people do park along the park. Miracosta, I will say also, is pretty affected with overflow traffic from these residential communities, mostly the one west, I'm probably going to massacre that street name, Caie Guamas. That community actually overflows quite a bit onto the street. Little history on Camino Miracosta, it used to be four-lane road. They narrowed the road due to the lack of traffic on it. It didn't need to be a four-lane road. That was also done to not only add in the Class II bike lanes, but to help slow vehicles down. As you can see, Miracosta's a pretty wide street, 64 feet curb-to-curb. So one of the things when you are analyzing a crosswalk is that distance and how long it takes to get across the street. So several of the things we look at include that distance, the time to cross, the number of pedestrians we're actually seeing out there is usually the biggest number. So in your packet, we included our worksheet of how you get to the engineering number of what we see to qualify for a crosswalk. The number of pedestrians seen did not meet it. It actually has to be really quite high to trigger a crosswalk, unless there are very special circumstances. And so as we go through that worksheet that we included, it only received, on our worksheet, it does list 10 points. There's a math error in there. It's actually only eight. And from an engineering standpoint, we're looking to try to get 14 points. So backing that math backwards a little bit, that would actually need to get almost 90 to 100 people an hour, peak hour, trying to cross that street. We don't expect that to happen, even on weekends and the sporting events. So what we've done is tried to see the other alternatives we can do out here. And shortening that distance is one of the safest ways to get people across that street. There are new state laws that allow people to cross pretty much anywhere. J-jockeying is effectively illegal now. And so what we're trying to do is get them to and from this park in a safer manner, and reduce that distance where they now have a safe harbor to stop in the middle of the street. Instead of the striped lines, you actually have a median out there. I personally believe that median will help slow some traffic down on that street also. It has slowed drastically over the years, but still probably not enough for a lot of the people who live along there. With that, I have Ryan here, in case there's any technical questions that come up. And the presentation for it, as you can see on the screen, is a raised median that'll have some signage on there, some reflective signs. The area is pretty well lit with existing streetlights, so that was a benefit to having the park right there. We're proposing also 30 feet of curb. So what that does is, if cars were parked in those areas, you really couldn't see somebody start to walk out into the street. And so you really, on crosswalks, should have a longer distance of red curb in front of them to help that line of sight for that pedestrian. Not only the pedestrian seeing the cars, but then the cars seeing the pedestrian. One thing I will say about having a crosswalk here would be considered a mid-block crosswalk at a non-controlled intersection, something that a lot of traffic engineers have a term of a false sense of security, or a false sense of safety, especially nowadays with our phones, and we want people paying attention when they cross. So if you put a crosswalk here, more people are actually paying less attention. And so with something like the refuge island, I think is a great alternative to at least start the process. If we were to ever consider a crosswalk, I'd probably want to start with something like this first. And then that way, it reduces that false sense of security, and it tells the walkers, you can cross here, but you're also paying attention as you're doing so, looking both ways, hopefully. With that, that's kind of what we have here. This is a recommendation to City Council. That recommendation will also include traffic code updates for that red curb, if you are, if we do move forward for approval. With that, we're available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. That's pretty straightforward. Let me ask my colleagues if they want to ask you any questions.
I don't want to ask a question.
Okay, Commissioner.
Is this actually considered a crosswalk?
I'd say no.
No, technically, it is not. Official crosswalk.
I'm just concerned we've got a sign that says it is a crosswalk.
The sign says it's, we have a warning sign for crossing pedestrians, but it is not official crosswalk.
So that warning sign is something we've used in the past near, like, senior housing or areas where there is heavy traffic of people just crossing streets. And so it's not a symbol of a crosswalk ahead, it's a symbol of pedestrians there. Like, if you're entering a park area, it's a sign we often use, or a.
So that is the actual sign, then? Just.
Yeah, it's more of a warning of pedestrians are in the area.
Okay. Any thought of putting a sign like that on the island itself, where we've got the veer out on the island, the no U-turn? I guess that's in the middle area.
Right. I'll defer to Ryan on that. It might get a little clutter in there.
It could be smaller than normal.
It was my initial thought.
Whatever, like children playing kind of sign. There'd just be, look out, people are walking there.
Yeah, I'll defer to Ryan on that. My first initial thought is it's a little cluttered.
Yes, if too many signs in the same time, it's a bothering of the drivers to detect all of signs, including the crossing pedestrians. So we try to optimize the number of signs, instead of the too many signs at the one scene.
Yeah, the only reason I said that is, if I see a crosswalk, I'll slow down. Well, here, I won't see a crosswalk.
And it is an interesting question. I'm going to kind of pose the same, similar question to Ryan. Could we replace the no left and no U-turn with that pedestrian sign, potentially, if that's what you're looking at, if it's a sign clutter issue? Because ultimately, there is no U-turn there, but it's, you know, it's hard to do a U-turn on that street.
We may replace it, one, like, Luton sign with the pedestrian crossing sign in the middle of the street.
Yeah, because I don't think that no left is, no U-turn is required. And so if we were looking at trying to reduce sign clutter and you prefer it, we can mention that in the councils.
I'll take your recommendation on it. It just seems that, safety first.
Yeah, no, I completely understand. If you want to make that part of the motion at the end of the night, that's definitely something we would bring up to council.
What are the three lights that are under that bottom sign? Is that little lights?
Reflective lights, right?
Is that just reflective lights?
Not flashing or anything like that.
Nothing, no lit. Okay. And you know how we have those lights when people want to cross on El Camino Real, and they push a little button, and you get that little yellow light coming up? Would that, would that be something good here, or would, does that make it an official crosswalk when you do that?
If we do that, that's an official crosswalk. But in this case, it is not warranted, so we just come up with this option, instead of the flashing pavement lighting system.
How much more would it cost to make it an official crosswalk? Even, I mean, because it's not calculating the need for it, but we're almost kind of doing it. Well, I mean, what's the hesitation of making it official crosswalk?
Really that false sense of security. We don't want to have a crosswalk just mid-block, where there's, the cars aren't expecting to stop.
Got it.
And so that's been something that, for Akram Hendia, our traffic engineer from 25 years, has blew that into my mind over the last 20 years of, you know, that false sense of security. It really kind of makes sense for me. And if it's something in the future, we can always create modifications in the future if we're seeing any additional issues here, type of thing, of adding a flashing light and something like that. But at the same time, we don't like people's, we get a lot of complaints if the flashing lights go on 24/7, stuff like that.
I have a question. Because it's in the middle, it's not attached to a side street, so you're kind of expecting a crosswalk, you know, maybe at the, well, either side, not in the middle. So where do we have one of these already? That we could compare and see how it's working?
It's a good question. I don't know if San Clemente actually has one. We don't have a lot of 64-foot-wide streets, even El Camino Real's not this wide. And so we, in most other, you know, Avenida Vista Hermosa, or something, or Pico, or something like that, we have enough crossings where we don't have a dedicated use like this, where we're seeing a residential development across the street from a park. So we're really not having that situation like this, where a park is, doesn't have an intersection on it that's lit also. So if other areas, like a school or something like that, we, they're usually signalized intersections.
And where is the larger senior community? Is it right where that crosswalk is?
I think, I don't know if there's senior communities, but the upper-left picture here, I'll probably defer to some of the residents here. That upper-left, or, excuse me, the upper-right portion on this photo is a larger community that I believe is 55-plus? I'm kind of, no, it's all age?
It needs to be.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm a senior, and I'm a slow walker, so I need all the bells and whistles that you need to cross the street with. I do appreciate the island there, but it makes me a little nervous when there isn't a designated for the driver. The driver is unaware that there's a crosswalk there.
Keep in mind, it is not a crosswalk.
It's not a crosswalk.
And they're able, they're able legally to cross there now.
Yes.
And so what we're trying to do is give them a refuge island.
If you can, you can j-jock legally, yes.
Let me just chime in. And I've done some traffic engineering professionally in my past, and I was always taught and told, hey, you do not want to have a crosswalk where it's not warranted, where it doesn't meet the warrants, because people have false sense of security. I think especially where there's not a lot of pedestrians, the drivers that frequent that area, most of the time they go through, there's not a pedestrian, so they're not, they're not really, you know, looking for them in that location. If there was, like you said, lots of PEDs per hour, then, you know, they know, hey, there's going to be people here. then, then they, you know, they know, hey, there's going to be people here, I'm gonna. But when it's kind of infrequent, they're less looking for it. And so it helps the pedestrians pay more attention, like I need to be on my toes here crossing a thing. I, I think the, the refuge island is a great compromise.
Any other questions? Scott, did you have any, did you have a question further?
Um, the, the, where there are the pad warning signs, it says, replace it with a thirty-six by thirty-six pad crossing sign. What are we replacing?
We have a, a smaller sign like this, but this is a smaller sign, same type, but smaller.
Same time.
But we like to replace it with the larger signs.
Got it. And I assume there's no curb cut at these locations, correct?
No curb cuts at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Camp, you've got a question?
Yeah, a question.
So maybe I'm not understanding this sign. It looks like there's a median and then a arrow to go around it. Doesn't that assume that somebody's driving in the, cause the median extends, right, all the way to the intersection?
The yellow striping does, correct. The divided center.
Okay, so doesn't that sort of assume that somebody's driving in the median?
Uh, I think it's just saying, it's saying to stay right, you know, just a, a warning that something is ahead.
But there's only one lane on each side, right? Cause you have the bike lane.
Correct.
So that's, you got, you're talking about clutter. To me, that's an unnecessary, I don't know, I guess I can comment on it later, but that's, that sign make, you know, presumes that somebody's driving in the median, which they're not supposed to be anyway. And if you put a, as Commissioner Crandall was suggesting, a safety sign, then that gets rid of some of the clutter, I think. And as, as well as the, um, no U-turn. So anyway, that's, that seems like an odd.
Anything else for staff before I call the members of the public? Okay. We've got, uh, four members of the public that want to speak to us tonight. And thank you all for appearing here tonight. It really makes a, an impact on us. So thank you. I'm going to call a few at a time and feel free to come on up to the front and then I'll bring you up one at a time. First speaker will be Heather Pepper, followed by Angie Mus- Muscari, followed by Daniel Zanka, and then Carolyn will be last. Okay, Heather Pepper, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for considering this refuge island. I am an owner of two dogs that were elderly at the time and I have had moments where I've had to uh, be careful and look and I listened and I was cautious and I slowly was making my way across the road. And what you can't see from this map is there is a corner from the far right side of the picture. And if people are coming around that corner at fifty miles per hour, you then have to abort your mission and head back to the safety of the sidewalk. So, um, this island would be at least a place you could rest while the cars go whipping by. And, um, after that island, people do start to speed up. It's a, cause it's a straightaway. So, uh, this would be really great to have, at least to make it across the street. Uh, I'm trying to think of what else would be helpful. Uh, it is a very large, uh, gap to, to make it across. So, uh, there's cars parked along the side of the road, there's RVs, so the signage does get a little lost. There are, I noticed the other day, uh, caution walk, there's pedestrian caution signs. They get lost with all, everything going on. So, I noticed that in Laguna Beach, they do have a crosswalk on the Canyon Road by the Laguna College for Art and Design. And I don't even know if this is appropriate for this street, but the light turns quickly red for the students to cross and then it quickly turns green. I don't know if that's appropriate for this road, but it's also a very large street to cross. And I think a student was killed, uh, several years ago and they put that up. So I'm hoping no one will ever get killed on the street, but just, you know, just putting that out there as an idea. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Angie Muscari?
Yes. Hi, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Um, I first want to thank Ryan for his diligence on the project. His ability to show up to our community, Dan and I have met with Ryan several times and he was receptive to everybody that attended the meetings, the various individuals from the communities, surrounding communities. Um, he was kind and compassionate. He listened to each and every person. I mean, really gave them time and, and I really appreciate that. He's, he's a good one to keep on board. Thank you, Ryan. We appreciate you. Um, I've been, my husband and I have lived in the Maracosta Villas area, which is, um, off of that Cali Guaymas adjacent to the park. Um, we have over two hundred units there. It's changed quite a bit over the years. We, we moved there in twenty-ten and it was a quiet sort of senior location, which was great. And then things changed and we have a lot of young families, um, which is wonderful. Not quite as quiet anymore, but it's still wonderful. The children, um, yeah, they're crossing the street all of the time. With the stores and the shops and the candy stores and the cookie stores and everything that are near that Sprouts Shopping Center, um, kids are darting across that street throughout the day. We have a lot of, um, young families that are homeschooled, so it's not just, you know, certain hours of the day. It's, it's throughout the day. Um, I've seen young mommies push strollers and uh, hold the hands of their young children and hold on to a dog or two as they dodge cars crossing the street. I've seen cars whiz by those mommies as they stand in the middle of no man's land, um, trying to get to the other side safely. Um, it's, it's dangerous. Um, something, something will happen if we are not proactive and make that location safe for our communities. And I, that's pretty much what I have to say, I suppose, but I appreciate your, your efforts here and being here this evening and, and receptive to the concerns of our communities.
Thank you for being here too. Daniel Zanka, followed by Carolyn Nu- Nuphy?
I'd like to thank the City of San Clemente for having such a wonderful city that we all reside in and we're so happy to live here that we are compelled to be involved in doing as much as we could to make this city even better. But thank you for, um, you know, having us today. Thank you to Ryan Kim and the city engineering, the planning commission. Everyone, we love living here. I'd like to just speak for the people in the community that this most affects. There are some elderly people. There are mothers with children that cross the street. There are twelve-year-old kids on bikes that cross the street. And, you know, there are people that have a difficulty walking fast, maybe a little bit of a handicap or what have you. This park that you have given our city is so incredible. It's so big. It has so many possibilities and it's so underutilized. So when we didn't score as high as we like to on the crosswalk, it, a lot of it has to do with, the crossing that street is, is almost like gambling. The odds are not really good. And you wait there and you look for the traffic to clear in one direction and to clear in the other. And it can take a long time. And for a resident in Seascape Village, Harvey Bauer, who couldn't be here tonight, he's eighty, he's ninety-four years old and it's his birthday today, that's why he's not here. But he walks from Seascape Village with his walker to Sprouts every morning at seven-thirty. You could set your watch to it and he's an inspiration to the community. But he won't cross the street to go to that park and he'd love to because it's, doesn't, the gamble is, the risk is too high. The odds are not good. The, the Refuge Island that Ryan has proposed, um, and the city, uh, traffic engineers have proposed, does give the pedestrians that opportunity to take a halftime to get there to the other side. And I think clearly it would reduce that risk and encourage more people to enjoy this wonderful park. We see so many more opportunities in that park in the summer to have events there. And I would suggest this to the city if, if it would be with your approval. If you had a major event there, like four of these communities together enjoying a summer picnic and they don't even have to drive there, everybody can walk. Maybe we could hire a crossing guard like they do at the schools for one day. Just to make, while the event is going on, they, they could actually make that passageway absolutely a hundred percent safe. For, for, and there could be an instructional thing during the event to say, this is what we have today. Remind our citizens, our residents to say, to know that when the crossing guard isn't there, this is a safer way, but be, again, don't have a false sense of security. Make sure that you understand what we need to do to cross this road. So, you know, I, I speak for the moms who love to take their kids there in strollers. Uh, I, the, the dads who take their dogs to run at the park. And we, we've lost a dog there hit by a car. Ten years ago, I saw a, a twelve-year-old girl, her name was Taylor Percy, uh, on a skateboard, just with her friends, just as dusk approached, just like riding her skateboard near the curb in the street. And she just slipped and turned right in front of a, a passing car. Now, I'm not saying this is going to prevent that, but I would say slowing the traffic down enough to react to situations like that. That, that could happen to anyone and especially crossing the road.
And Daniel, thank you. Your time has expired, but I really appreciate what you're saying.
Thank you for listening to us.
Yes, thank you so much. Carolyn Nufo- Nu- Nuphy?
Deva Hotney.
Uh, thank you for that correction.
That's okay.
Welcome tonight.
Thank you so much. Um, I, um, live in Seascape Village and there is three hundred and one units in that complex. You were saying that on the map, it looks like it's large and it is a very large complex. It is an older community, uh, but we have a lot of new young families moving in. It's fun to see the strollers and the moms and the dogs all out walking. And it's a very walkable community, but it is scary to try to cross Maracosta. It's a long stretch with no crosswalks or any place to really try to get across. And a lot of people do go down and like to enjoy the, the park. So it would be a wonderful, uh, item to be able to get a little bit, you know, allow the people that do walk slower, whether because they have a stroller, whether they're on a walker or whatever. But even, you know, I'm not that old and it is, you know, you almost sometimes have to run to get across the street without getting hit. So I do appreciate all the work that everybody has done on this. I'm sort of late to the game. And, uh, you know, hope you guys do consider it for the safety of the community. There's a lot of people, we know we have, I think, four large communities in that area. So we have, you know, it's pretty dense with all the different HOAs that are in the area. So thank you for your time and appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you. And again, thank you to everybody for being here. Did, did everyone speak that wanted to? Okay. Uh, what we're going to do is we're going to, um, talk amongst ourselves about the recommendation to the city council. Uh, I want to open it up for discussions and of course, the, our professional staff is also available for follow-up questions. Who wants to lead off?
I'm going to lead off.
Okay.
Since you're looking the wrong direction.
Yes, I'm, thank you very much. Commissioner Prescott LaFleur, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, really concerned about safety. I liked having the respite of the, um, the islands there. I don't know how wide they are. Hopefully they'll fit a stroller. I was going to ask Ryan, in other communities or maybe in this one, is there any way that there can be any markings on the street to alert the driver that this is something, they're approaching something new, to educate the driver besides a sign?
Uh, we may have some markings for crossing pedestrian, says crossing pedestrian, something.
Something like, that would be in the street.
In the street.
So they would see this as they're approaching the island.
Yes.
That would make me feel a whole lot better.
What is it that, uh?
Looking for some education towards the driver as they approach this, so that they know that there's something different coming up ahead.
And, uh, Mr. Kim, what did you just suggest? A?
Crossing, X, crossing pedestrian in, uh, in front, uh, near the.
Signage.
In, in near the signs.
On the pavement.
Got it, okay.
You wouldn't want that false sense of security. You're almost crosswalky.
Well, this is averting the, it's a good comment. It's a, it's alerting the driver that you're entering a, a pedestrian crossing area. We're not saying it's a crosswalk to the driver, but it, so it's not giving the pedestrian that false sense of security. It's actually warning the driver a little bit more. It's the one that actually literally has an X, I-N-G, if I remember.
Yes. Just more, you're looking for.
Or I'm going to have to stand out there. Stand there with a poster saying.
People are just going to cross.
People are going to cross here.
Okay. All right. Um, was there anything else that you would, along the lines of her question, that you think would be valuable?
You might want to, if we do go down that path, maybe leave it up and, uh, before council, we can look into some other markings like that and look at the other options out there and then pose that to council.
So enhance, and then a way to enhance the driver experience that there, there's going to be, you're in, you're in a pedestrian crossing zone. We know this is an area where people cross, heads up, slow down, pay attention.
And I, and I like what, um, Ryan said. It's most likely going to be that X-ing s- symbol, but maybe if we can research it and see if there's anything else or something better that we think in that area. If any, even if technically we put something down and in a year we find something better, we can always change it. It's not too hard to take out the, the.
Okay, so, so did you want to continue or is that, okay. Commissioner McCann, your comments please?
I think this is a really good solution without putting in a crosswalk, which I would not be supportive of. So I, I think this is great, very supportive.
Okay, Commissioner Camp?
Yeah, the thing that I didn't see when I was reviewing this is that blind turn. And I think that really necessitates, I like that word. Um, necessitates the need for this, which I think is a good solution. I questioned that one sign because I don't think it's necessary. Hopefully nobody's driving in the median and has to move because it's really only a one. So other than that, I think it's great. Um, I appreciate, uh, Commissioner, um, Lusk- Lusk- oh, excuse me.
It's mouth full. Prescott LaFleur.
That's a blend suggestion. But other than that, I think it's a good solution. I think it's needed.
Okay. Commissioner Crandall, your comments please.
Uh, yeah, um, real quick for Zach, it's just what, a six-inch curb?
Yeah.
And what, paved in the middle?
Uh, it actually is paved, yeah.
I don't think we need the no left turn or U-turn sign myself. Is there any kind of crosshatching we can put in where the pedestrian refuge actually is that would enhance the fact nobody's going to turn there? Either a green stripe or a typical whatever, but, um, and then also for what Karen was saying, I'm kind of concerned that maybe we need to do that, um, slow the electric bikes down in the bike lane and warn them, cause they love to forget and ignore intersections and particularly the one down on Coast Highway by Poche Beach. Even though there's stoplights and everything, you put one foot in that bike lane, you're going to get run over without looking. So just consider that. So my thought is, um, put a hatching or something in the middle to keep the cars from turning left. I don't know who'd want to anyway, um, turn there. And something to slow the bikes down. Now, we changed this from a two-lane, a four-lane road. Have you noticed any slowdown in the traffic since we did that?
Um, from some communications with some friends of mine that live in the area, they do think it's definitely slowed down.
Excellent, okay.
I don't know if we've had any recent data on it. I'll defer to Ryan, but, um, in my driving of it, I feel like I have to drive slower also.
Yeah, cause I drive this all the time.
And that's the benefit of edge lines, you know, that it restricts your lane a little bit and it feels like you're in a tighter area. And so that's one of the benefits of why edge. And so that's one of the benefits of why edelines are considered a traffic calming.
Okay. So those are my basic comments. Striping that center, getting rid of the left turn, that's making it big. And then maybe putting a small pedestrian or walking person there instead of that U-turn. Just one more hint that there's activity here.
If I can follow up on the striping in the center, I'm thinking we might actually keep the double yellow there on each side, because right now, if you look at the exhibit, there's a double yellow that...
Okay, yeah. That's great.
Technically, still kinda shows that double yellow.
That'll accomplish the same thing.
And it somewhat warns the pedestrian also, whose visibility might not be great, that here's where you stop.
Yeah, because I like, I really like it, because now you only have to really look one way.
Right.
And keep your eye on that traffic, not worrying about the second lane. Do that when you get to the refuge. So, excellent. Good job.
Commissioner Davis, your feedback, please.
Yes, I think the notification's a great idea that you had, Karen. But you know how, when you're driving down the freeway and you got those little zzz that if you start going off to the side? What are they called?
Lot dots.
Or vibration?
Yeah.
They're cuts, they're cuts in the concrete where you feel...
What are the cuts called? Can we have a series of cuts?
Rumble.
That gives it a little zzz?
Rumble.
Rumble strip?
I'm talking about rumble strip.
No, 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 that's a bump up, right? Rumble?
No, rumble strip is what you're talking about.
That it cuts in the actual...
It vibrates the...
Would that be more effective or in addition to maybe some painting there?
Because...
It might raise some noise issues in the neighborhood.
So the areas that we have put lot dots and kinda rumble strips up on Frontera, actually we put them in and immediately...
Put them out?
Yeah, we had to pull them out. And then we were looking at doing them on Southwest, and I believe staff told me that years ago they put them into and I had to pull them out.
So I could see...
Any complaints came in immediately.
Yeah. Shoot. I mean, it's pretty wide open on top and bottom, except for that one corner. You know, just, you could see up there, you know, like, there's no houses right there, but, because it's commercial on one side and then like open area, right? And then you got the park on one, the other side. Yeah, I don't know. So the, if you're heading from north to south, the rumble or rumble strips would be right next to that park, right? Is that correct? Got me there?
So those red roofs are actually residences there?
Oh, they are. Okay, yeah, yeah. I'm not picking that up here. Okay. All right, just some thought. Another thing is, oh, instead of blacktop there, can we put some low-lying, like, landscape so it doesn't look like blacktop?
I'm a little weary of the line of sight blocking it over time, maintenance, irrigation, just, there's a lot of...
Well, it is beautifying the city. You know, like, so, I mean, this black, this is a piece of blacktop that's in the middle of...
It's a curve with blacktop.
Yeah. It's not gonna look pretty. And I understand you talking about, I was thinking about the line of sight, but if you could have something that grows like six inches.
It still gets into irrigation, the maintenance. I mean, it's something that's not water.
Well, plus, you know, people may trip on the landscape.
No, they're supposed to walk in between, see where the 10-foot space is. Because I thought about aprons and going up and pushing your strollers up, but the intention is to walk in between these islands, correct?
But there is a possibility two people crossing on top of the raised medians too, instead of the path between the raised medians, but also there is a possibility people crossing on top of the raised medians.
Of course, like everywhere in the town, you know? Like, we have medians on the way to my house, and if those were flat blacktop, I'd be pretty bummed out about it.
One thing we, one thing we have in a lot of areas is a stamped red concrete.
Yeah, that's not gonna, for me?
I know, actually, what we put on El Camino Real, Pico...
The Old Hanson sidewalk.
Yeah, that's, that's good on a sidewalk. But, you know, like, so when you get off on El Camino Real and you just go straight down, is it Valencia? And, you know, they got the median, all those medians in there are landscaped. And if it costs the city X-mile money to provide that beautification, and this is what we're doing, so be it.
Yeah, but those aren't refuge.
Say again?
I think either that or...
No, it is...
Caltrans uses granite rock and just concretes it in.
For consistency, if we're gonna do a hardscape, I mean, we haven't really listed what it's on here yet. We didn't say asphalt or red stamped concrete. Budget, if budget allows, I'd, for consistency's sake, I'd probably prefer the red stamped concrete that we've been doing on Pico. If it's landscaping, I'll leave that up to you guys. I'm a little concerned on the cost and the long-term cost of it. And then it just not being up to somebody's par from the neighborhood if it's, you know, slowly starts, and then they want to get out there and start working on it in the middle of the street, I am...
I hear you, Zach.
Yeah, the stamped concrete sounds good.
It doesn't to me, but...
If I can just...
Go ahead. I got some other stuff I'm talking about.
Go back to you then. No. No, I just think people are gonna cross along that entire 100-foot section. I mean, you're not gonna necessarily go right down to the 10-foot strip in the middle to cross, I don't think. Yeah. Because it's kind of a free-for-all right now. It's fair game.
The kids that are gonna cross that, on those things, are gonna cross wherever they feel like anyway. These are for the slow-goers.
Right.
That are gonna not jump up that six inch. Yeah, me too.
That's just the comment I have about landscaping.
I just think it's ugly.
You guys know I like landscaping.
Okay, did you have other, you have other stuff, right? Go ahead.
I do have some other stuff, so, okay, that's taken care of. That's taken care of. Nope, that's it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so what I'm hearing is, the commission is in favor of this and wants to do everything imaginable, responsible, to make it, to make it a success, to make it easy for people to safely maneuver, we'll say. Can you summarize what you've heard, either, you know, Ryan or Zach? Because I've heard a couple of things, changing up the signs, putting some paint down. Do you guys want to maybe summarize sort of what you think is, now that we've had this conversation, where you're at in terms of...
Sounds like, yeah, I think I can take a stab at it. It sounds like the design is favorable with some modifications to include replacing the U-turn, left turn sign with one of the yellow pedestrian signs. I'll probably add that it might not be three by three, it might be the little bit smaller one, just so people can see behind it type of thing. And then also, the keep the yellow, double-yellow center median, in the median area of that 10-foot crossing area. And then keep some advanced warning signs in the street, similar to a crossing ahead, or if there's another alternative available that staff can find before council, we'll put a couple different options for council with that up. We'll probably have a staff recommendation. I'm assuming this is actually gonna be consent at council. And then stamped, the median actually being stamped red concrete to mimic the design that's being, the latest design that's being used on Pico.
Did anybody else have something else in mind that they did not hear? Somebody had mentioned, I think, about maybe trying to notify the bike lane?
That's what I was, I was just gonna add.
Okay.
So that, that street marking, if there's something we can do in the bike lane too, I think that was the one thing I, I have it written down. I didn't say it, though. I apologize.
Okay. I think the sense I have of the commission is, we want, we want to, we want to see this help the community. We want to see the community have an effective solution. And so I've got one, two, three, four, five additions from what we had earlier, where we started from. And that, and you guys are supporting those?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else that you guys can think of that you feel wouldn't enhance this area for safer crossings?
And maybe, I mean, as we get, we have a little bit of time before council, as we can keep looking, keep thinking of those types of things.
Yeah, because if you do, I think we would support you bringing those forward to the council in your recommendation.
Man, the one thing that's kinda jumping at my head is, on the sidewalk, can we add something of, you know, watch for cars, something like that, a little sign.
Something advising pedestrians to look both ways.
Advising the pedestrians that cars will not stop, cars don't stop, something like, I don't know.
You don't have the right of way.
Try not to be sign clutter.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we own the park, so we can technically put it in the grass right there or something. And across the way, I'm not sure, maybe it's, maybe it's a new pole and a new sign.
I mean, the challenge we have here is, this is a busy street. It's a wide street. We have attractive uses on both sides that are encouraging people to access them from the opposite side of the street. So how do, how do we create the safest environment as we can?
Correct. And we're trying not to create a crosswalk, but we're knowing that this is a high area where they are crossing.
Yeah, we're trying to make it an accommodation to improve safety.
Exactly.
Okay.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Yes, Commissioner McCann?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Excellent.
I move that we recommend council approve this item with the additions/revisions as enumerated, and also giving staffs, you know, kind of carte blanche flexibility as they continue to, you know, mull this over. If they think that some other addition is good, that they can incorporate that as well.
And make the sequel findings.
Do we need to make sequel findings on this?
Yes.
Oh, and make the sequel findings as found in the staff report.
Right, it is a...
It's on page two.
Do you want me to read them?
Yeah, it's a, it's a Class 6 exemption. Okay, so that would be incorporated into your motion.
Yes.
Is there a second for the motion? Seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any discussion on this? Any additions, amendments? We're all good? All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen, for your service to the community. It sounds like you're adding value here.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who came out to help us get this right. Happy holidays, folks. Thanks for being here.
That one feels good.
Thanks, Scott, for your motion. That was helpful. Okay, Andy, I mean, Jonathan, what did you want to do with our next agenda item? Did you, should we, do we need to do it in session, or can we adjourn and talk about it later? What do you want to do?
I'll just give a 30-second overview on that, and then we can move on from there. And I do have a couple notes for staff briefing towards the end of the agenda. So for this next item, I was gonna have our staff member, Alexia, who some of you have already met with, be here. Unfortunately, she's ill this evening. But we have time before the next meeting, so we wanted to distribute these out to you. The intent and thought with these is that the majority of our interaction with you related to packets would transition to the iPads, as well as just being a more convenient platform for you to always have direct access to your city email and direct links to resources, like the general plan, specific plans, other things that you might want to reference while you're doing your reviews as a design review committee member or planning commissioner. So that's the intent with those. And we'll have availability in January before the next meeting if you would like to go over how to optimize your device with Alexia, who's gonna be much more apt at that than I am. So that's all I have to add for that item tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Alexia, not Alex.
So basically, if people have questions, you'll get her contact info to us, and we can just contact her directly?
Yes, I'll do that.
And the intent is to phase out the notebooks?
Correct. And we're aware, you know, if we have large projects that have development plans, site plans, things of that sort, we understand that there will still be occasions where hard copy sets are appropriate. So we'll discuss those as those come up, but for items even like the one tonight, I think a lot of those can be handled digitally.
Yeah. Is everybody comfortable with the direction staff wants to go?
Oh, yeah.
We all supportive of it?
All right. With the... When's it implemented? Are we getting a hard packet in January, or is it effective January?
Looking to not deliver hard packets January, unless we have large format plans that we need to provide.
I mean, I haven't given...
Okay.
What are you gonna do with light, freeze that?
I don't think it's saving anybody. They still have to do the material.
I'm talking about cameras.
Oh. Yeah.
Saving applicants a ton of money. Funds are not...
Yeah. Okay. Any other, any comments or other questions? Great, we're gonna move on to all business. We don't have any, and then that's item 11 is next, and that is commission reports, staff reports. Any commissioner have a report or comment they wanna? Anybody? Jonathan, did you have something you want to mention?
Yeah, just a couple final notes for end of the year. The first is just thank you for being here. I recognize that we are close to the holidays and appreciate all of your time that you invest in this commission and for the city, so wanted to start by just saying thank you. And I wanted to provide some updates as well, primarily related to the LCP, the Local Coastal Program, grant programs that we have started. There's three components of that. This is related to that study session we did a few weeks ago. The first is a LiDAR survey of the city so that we have a better understanding of the bluffs and canyon edges and features of that sort. We are in process of executing that agreement now, and so we expect that flyover to happen in the next month. And we'll get some materials out through the city channels when we have a confirmed date on that, because there will be a plane that kinda loops back and forth over the city. And given all of the recent interest in things flying in the air, we'll make sure that people are aware of that. The next is going to be that, for the parking study, we did have our principal planner, Zach Ream, along with our consultant at the Glitz, and they had a pop-up to do some intercept surveys at that event. They got 127 surveys collected, which is really good for those types of things. And just starter data, that was focused just on that one event, so that wasn't the, like a final comprehensive survey. They're gonna do a few different types of surveys. Their work over the break, kind of how we had lined up the timeline, was for them to do a lot of their research time in this next window, so they'll be looking at coastal commission precedent decisions, how other cities have lined up their codes, and doing additional work familiarizing themselves with our current codes. In January, we will be doing our first low-season parking count. That's gonna be the weekend after MLK. You never do parking counts on holiday weekends so that you have a more clear understanding of what your baselines are. The peak one won't be done until the second half of July. So January will be, again, our first study, and again, will inform the community, because there will be some cars with cameras driving around the downtown. And we'll communicate all of the data protection, et cetera, that's in place for that study. And also in January, we'll begin engaging the business community, the Downtown Business Association and Chamber in particular, because we will also be having a survey that's directly targeted towards them. So just wanted to provide that quick update on where we are in the process on those items. And then finally, wrapping up, just a heads up on city schedules moving forward. City Hall will be closed at noon on Christmas Eve, so we will be open Monday and Tuesday next week, but at noon on Christmas Eve, the public doors will close, and those will reopen 7:30 a.m. Monday, January 6th. So that's the furlough window when City Hall will be closed. And with that, that wraps up my updates, so thank you for that time.
No, you're welcome.
January 6th or January 2nd?
January 6th. Yeah. Yeah.
So it's the weekend after. Will there be building inspections during that time?
There will be. So we'll have posted on the front of the building as well as on the city website. There will still be opportunities for building inspections. So the doors being closed doesn't mean that all city services are done. You can still submit code enforcement complaints. We'll have park rangers, code enforcement officers, and others that are still on duty during that window of time. And yes, building inspections can still occur.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Adjournment, I want to, before I call for a motion on adjournment, I just want to let everybody know, the meeting on January 22nd, I will be absent. So just heads up on that. Does anyone else have any scheduled things they want to mention? Okay. So I'll go ahead and move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, scheduled for Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, 6 p.m. Here at City Council Chamber, City Hall. Second from anyone?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Scott McCann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you. Happy holidays to all.